Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 5:30, and I will call this regular meeting of the Burnsville City Council to order. It is our tradition to stand for a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance, and we invite you to join us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's meeting is being conducted both in person and online. Members of the public may attend in person, or the public may also view our meetings on burnsville.gov/meetings, or Comcast Channel 16, or 859. The public can also participate through Zoom by joining us at zoom.us/join. More information is available on our meeting's webpage and in the council agenda packet. The next item on the agenda is announcements. Announcements have to do with all of our upcoming meetings. Regular council meetings are scheduled for Tuesday, December 17th at 5:30 p.m., and Tuesday, January 7th at 5:30 p.m. We have a work session that's scheduled for Tuesday, December 10th at 5:30 p.m. All meetings of the council is held here in the council chambers. The next item is citizens' comments. This is the opportunity for anyone in the audience or online to address the council on an item that is not on the printed agenda, not in application form, that will be coming before us at a future date. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Collins, anyone online?
No one online.
Okay, thank you. We will then move on. The next item is additions to the final agenda, and this is for emergency items only. City Manager Lindberg, are there any emergency items to come before the body?
Nothing from staff.
Members of the council? Okay, thank you. We will move on, and the next item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a group of items that's considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. However, an item on the consent agenda can be removed for a separate discussion and vote. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes an item to be removed for a separate discussion and vote? Mrs. Collins?
No one online, Mayor.
Members of the council? Mr. Lindberg?
Nothing from staff.
Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda, please?
Move to approve.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. We now move on to the regular agenda. The first item on the regular agenda is 5A, and this is a public hearing, and this is to approve the on-sale intoxicating liquor and on-sale Sunday license for Element Indoor Golf Burnsville LLC, doing business as Element Indoor Golf Burnsville, 14314, Burnhaven Drive. Our deputy city clerk, Mrs. Erica Henderson, is presenting. Mrs. Henderson?
Good evening, everybody. So this item is for an on-sale intoxicating liquor license and an on-sale Sunday license for Elemental Golf located at 14314 Burnhaven Drive. The Burnsville Police Department has conducted their background check, and nothing was found to deny the application, and also, as of this afternoon, all associated fees have been paid. City Code does require a public hearing for all new liquor license applications, and I can stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mrs. Henderson? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Anyone who wishes to speak to this item? Mrs. Collins?
No one online, Madam.
I will now close the public hearing. Members of the council, your pleasure.
Move to approve. Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and a motion carries.
Thank you.
Members of the public and city council, we are now going to recess because, according to the law, we cannot hold the truth and taxation public hearing until 6:00 p.m. So we will now recess the Burnsville City Council meeting and reconvene at 6:00 p.m. The motion to recess until 6:00 p.m.?
Move to recess.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. Okay.
Thank you for your participation.
We're now in recess.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is now 6:00, and I will now reconvene the Burnsville City Council meeting. The item that is next on the agenda is item 5B, and this is truth and taxation. And it's a truth and taxation meeting with a resolution establishing the 2025 property tax levy and adopting the 2025 budget and adopting the 2025-2029 capital improvement program. Presenting this evening is our deputy city manager and CFO, Mrs. Jenny Rhodey. Mrs. Rhodey, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight, as you said, we are here to discuss the final 2025 budget and tax levy. To start out, I'll just review the discussions we've had over the past year on the budget, starting in March, when we reviewed the financial management plan that really kind of starts, kind of sets the table for the budgets and lets us review where we're at in terms of the finances of each of our funds and helps us in our budget development throughout the year because we know how much we have to work with. In July, on July 16th, we discussed the 2025 through 2029 capital improvements plan, really reviewing the major projects planned in each area over the next five years, as well as reviewing the five-year financial plans for the capital projects funds. In August, we discussed the proposed 2025 budget and tax levy, really reviewing in detail impacts to the general fund as well as other operating funds, reviewing those budgets, as well as the tax levy proposed. In September, we discussed the fees, along with a detailed discussion on the utility rate study. We reviewed enterprise fund finance plans, including the utility funds. And then on September 17th, the council adopted the proposed city and EDA property tax levies for pay 2025. And tonight, you will have before you the final city and EDA property tax levy and budgets, as well as the 2025 through 2029 capital improvement plan. Few things on the budget. We've balanced to a 7.06% tax levy increase for 2025. What that means in terms of impacts to a median value home is approximately $5 per month. With that, as we look at the overall taxable market value within the city, that value stayed pretty stable, increased slightly at .2% or $24 million for 2025. The tax part of that is residential values did have a slight decline for 2025. One major factor in that decline is the state's homestead market value exclusion. They changed that for 2025 with that exclusion amount, or the maximum exclusion amount, increasing by about $8,000 per year. What that does is for homestead properties, properties up to a certain market value, part of that taxable value is excluded for tax purposes, and so with that exclusion increasing, it really did have an impact in overall total market values for residential properties. Additionally, commercial industrial values increased about 4.6%, and apartment values increased at about 2%, or 2.5%. But really, residential values make up the largest portion of taxable value within the city, so we saw a pretty level amount year over year. The tax rate increased from 42.5% to 45.6%. Really is a factor of the levy increase coupled with a very stable market value across the city. As we were developing the budget, as staff was developing the budget, in order to balance to this increase, we did make about $1.6 million in overall effectiveness corrections annually over the five years. This table here does talk about some of the analysis and some of the changes we did make from the budgets that were proposed. We did look at our revenues overall, and we made increases in some of those projections in revenues to the tune of about $444,000. EMS revenues, police and fire aid, and some other revenues were reviewed, and we felt we could increase those with some reasonable confidence. Host fee changes. The city receives host fees from the landfill that go to three of our capital projects funds. They go to the facilities fund, the IT capital fund, and the equipment and vehicle fund. We did make a change for three years, just a short-term change in the allocation, allocating what was in the facilities fund to the equipment and vehicle fund to really help stabilize the equipment and vehicle fund as we had more pressures in that area and really were implementing equipment certificates, so that really helps kind of stabilize those tax increases or kind of feather in those tax increases over those years. Across departments, we also reduced expenditures, current expenditures, across many departments within the general fund, including, you know, I can't even name them all probably correctly, but yes, we did increase them, or decrease them in recreation, HR, communications, across the board, almost every department had some reduction, so those were about $212,000. And we implemented a vacancy factor for 2025. In previous years, as we looked at FTEs, we budgeted for 100% of FTEs. This year, we thought it would be reasonable. There is always open positions, really to account for positions that are open during the year and the time to hire new staff, so we looked at our past five years of experience and really projected what a reasonable vacancy factor would be. And we also know that we're adding 11 positions through the org analysis, and those don't all come on in January 1st, so we took kind of a reasonable approach as to what kind of timing those positions might come on, and that amount was about $250,000 that we figured we would save just by assuming it would take a few months to really get those positions fully hired. Included in the budget as well, studies that inform our current budget as well as our future budgets, capital improvement studies that have been ongoing. We presented three this year: water treatment plant assessment, the parks plan, as well as the pavement management plan. We will have additional studies that will be completed in 2025 and inform future budgets. Also, we do an annual organizational analysis update. Since that original plan came out in 2024, 2023, we do an annual update that really at the beginning of the budget process, so we know what to plan for in terms of future staffing. And we look at three different areas: service inventory, staffing, as well as compensation. We have an ongoing communications assessment that will be wrapping up soon, as well as IT assessments, and a fire department standard of cover that will be upcoming. So those are just a few of the studies that are either in process or upcoming, and then we'll keep you informed as we finish those and complete those. As we look at the overall proposed tax levy for 2025, the total city levy is $52,886,987 with an EDA levy of $1.5 million for a total proposed levy, city and EDA of $54,386,987, about a $3.6 million year-over-year change, or 7.06%. The background and the resolutions do include a fund detail for those total city amounts. As we look at overall budgets for revenues and expenditures, and I'll run through revenues first, this is the total budget across all funds for the city for 2025. This does include all operations, as well as all 2025 projects from the capital improvement plan. Bond proceeds for 2025 are estimated at about $110 million. Really, a majority of that makes up bonds anticipated for a potential police city hall project. The remaining $10 million are really bonds that we do annually for street improvement projects, as well as utility projects, and then capital equipment certificates for equipment and vehicles. $54 million, $54.3 million is anticipated in property tax funding. That really is the majority of funding for operations within the city, so, you know, police, fire, streets, recreation, parks, all those operational funds really are funded from property taxes. Charges for services of $40 million. The majority of that $40 million is really utility charges, so those charges from the water and sewer utility, as well as the stormwater utility. Additionally, we have expenses, or charges for EMS, recreation, and some other areas, functional areas across the city, but a majority of those charges are really utility charges. Intergovernmental revenues are budgeted at $16.6 million. That includes any state, federal, and local grants, or cost share, or other revenues we're receiving from other governments, MSA funding for streets, federal grants in public safety, those kinds of things. Other taxes includes franchise fees, really for cable and utility franchise fees of $8.9 million. Other revenues are a collection of investment income, rents, other miscellaneous-type revenues. Transfers of $4.4 million, that really is transfers between funds within the city, so transfers balance between revenues and expenditures. They really are just within the city as a whole, but between different funds. And then the bottom two are licenses and permits and special assessments at just over $2 million each, for a total of $245 million for 2025. In terms of expenditures and uses, capital investments really are the largest item or largest category this year. That does include an estimate of $100 million for a police city hall project, and then the remaining $50 million is the, you know, normal capital expenditures we make each year, so equipment and vehicle, parks renovations, parks improvements, street improvements, water and sewer utility improvements, and other maintenance-type projects, as well as equipment and vehicles. So there's about $50 million across all those functional areas for capital investment. Personal services, that really is the people, really the operations of the city, really, and our investment in people. So about $57.4 million is invested in staff across the city in every area, from our utilities to public safety, to recreation, to parks, you know, to our internal services or administrative functions. Current expenditures at $32 million, that's the, you know, repairs and maintenance, day-to-day expenses, fuel, electricity, utilities, supplies, training, professional development, professional services, those kinds of things. Debt service of $10 million, that really is the annual principal and interest that we pay on financing our capital. So projects that have been financed through bonds, whether those be facility improvements in the past, streets, that debt service really represents that annual cost of financing those projects through bonding. And then transfers of $4.4 million, so a total of $253 million in planned expenditures for 2025. Just a quick table, we've been presenting for a couple of years now, the last five years, of a few different areas. We've been looking at property tax increases, so from 2021 to 2025, just shows a history of what our increases have been. In 2023, the 14.5% increase really represented that implementation of that org analysis for 2023 through 2026, so really the four years of additional staffing that really started in 2023. The city tax rate, just a history on that, it's been about 42%, 43% for the last four years. It did increase in 2025. These are all, you know, pretty expected, and actually, as we planned a couple of years ago in 2023, where we are today is a little below where we expected to be, so I think, you know, we're still seeing positive results from our planning as we go forward. Estimated market value, as you can see, in 2021, we were at $7.6 billion. We are currently about $9.8 billion in estimated market value, so really, those also helped to keep our tax rate pretty stable over the last four years, but that is about a 28%, I think, increase over the last five years, so we have seen significant increases in that area. And finally, we have the median value home in 2021 that was estimated at $277,000. It currently for 2025 is about $349,800, a slight decline over 2024, but nonetheless, a pretty significant increase in value of that median value home over the last five Additional information? I just want to let everybody know there is additional information on our budget landing page at burnsvillemn.gov/budgets, so that has information on all, basically, all budget-related discussions, presentations, and information. So if anybody wants more information about previous meetings or other things we've done this year, they can go there. It also includes information on property tax assistance programs. The state of Minnesota does have a couple of different property tax assistance programs, and you can get information either at the Minnesota Department of Revenue website, or you can go to our landing page, and we do have links to the appropriate spaces, so we'll get you there. With that, tonight, there are a few formal actions that we need to take. First, the city council will consider the final 2025 tax levy and budget resolutions, as well as the 2025 through 2029 CIP plan, capital improvement plan. Once those items are acted upon, the meeting will be recessed, and the EDA meeting will be convened. The EDA board will review the final EDA tax levy and budget and act on that. Once that's complete, the EDA meeting will be recessed. I'm gonna get these all, I think. And then, the city council meeting will be reconvened, and you will consider the consent to the final 2025 EDA tax levy. So those are the three actions, or the actions that will be needed this evening for the budget, and with that, I will stand for any questions.
Any questions for Jenny? We've been on this journey since March, as you identified at the beginning of your presentation. Any questions? Okay, thank you. And this is a public meeting, and I understand that, Mrs. Julick, you would like to address the council?
Yes, please. And give us your name and address for the record. Hi, my name's Beth Julick, 3120 South Loop Road, Burnsville. First off, you should look at your scheduling because you're scheduled to meet at the same time as Dakota County, so if somebody wants to go to Dakota County, talk about taxes, not gonna be able to do it, so.
Dakota County at 6:00 p.m.? They usually have it...
Got it right here, 6:00 today.
Well, our meetings are always in the evenings, theirs are always in the morning, so maybe they should look at what we're doing.
Well, maybe you two coordinate.
Yeah. Same to you, Mrs. Julick.
So my property taxes went up by 10.9%. Burnsville percentage was 17.5%. That's ridiculous. I don't know if anybody's got a 17.5% raise this year. My house value went up by 7.6%, so I live within my budget. Don't know why you guys can't. My neighbor's a few houses down, she had a 7.9% increase, so, well, why you going after me?
Mrs. Julick, I'm going to have our CFO go over all of that with you because there are many factors that come into it, and she can certainly go through what you have and help you understand what that is.
Okay, but just realize this is unsustainable if you keep increasing taxes by 17.5%.
Yeah. I mean... I understand, and it's not that we're going after you, it's how...
It seems that way.
Yeah, I can understand that it feels that way.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, but as you see, the levy is only at 7.06, but then, of course, you're saying that your house value only increased...
7.6%.
7.6%. And I don't know what the other factors are. Perhaps our CFO, Mrs. Rhodey, can talk with you afterwards and help you understand what all of that is and how all of those numbers come together for you.
Okay, that'd be fine. Do I have to wait for the entire meeting to be over?
Yeah, we will be over, yes, but, yeah, because she has to present. She's going to be on deck here for three more items.
Okay, maybe I'll just call you then. I thought this meeting would be different, it'd be more one-on-one. I've never gone to one of these meetings.
Oh, okay. You could also leave your phone number and contact information. I could call you if you'd like.
Sure, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, and if, yes, Alyssa, if you could help her, please, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council on this item? Anyone else who wishes to address the council? Mrs. Collins?
No one online, Madam.
Okay, members of the council. Mr. Shepherd, we usually bundle all of these. Are you okay with us bundling all of them?
I am okay with you bundling all of them.
Thank you.
Yep.
Members of the council, I need a motion to approve the resolution establishing the 2025 tax levy and approve the resolution adopting the 2025 budget and the 2025-2029 capital improvement program.
Move to approve.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And the clerk has the division of the House? Thank you. And I will now recess the Burnsville City Council meeting so the Economic Development Authority meeting can convene. President Gustafson, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. I call the Economic Development Authority meeting to order. And the clerks, please note that all commissioners are present. Item number one, are there any additions to the final agenda? Seeing none, I will move on to item two, which is our consent agenda, and that's the approval of the minutes. Is there anyone who wishes an item to be removed from the consent agenda for a separate discussion and vote? Seeing no one, may I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda? So moved. Mentioned by Commissioner Keeley, second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. We move on to item 3A, and that is a resolution adopting the Burnsville Economic Development Authority EDA 2025 property tax levy and budget. Jenny Rhodey, our deputy city manager and CFO, is presenting.
This one will be short. For this item, we have a 2025 proposed budget of $422,000, a reduction of about 54,511% for economic development activities, and a proposed property tax levy of $1.5 million for 2025.
Are there any questions? May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Kautz, second by Commissioner Keeley. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Yeah, there's an opposition.
Okay, there's no other business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Moved by Commissioner Keeley.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Workman. All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You got the division of the House, that, 412. Adjourn the meeting?
No.
Five. Will it adjourn? Yeah, she adjourned to adjourn.
Yeah, but that's okay.
We move back to our meeting, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I will now reconvene the Burnsville City Council meeting, and the last item on the agenda is a resolution adopting the Burnsville Economic Development Authority 2025 property tax levy, which was acted on, and it is the city council that ratifies this action. Mrs. Rhodey?
Yep, the proposed tax levy for 2025 for the EDA is $1.5 million.
Members of the councils, I don't think you need any more information from Mrs. Rhodey.
I moved the resolution.
And you're, and there's a motion from Councilmember Keeley to adopt the resolution.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. And.
Yes, that would be a no.
Okay. The clerk has a division of the House. Okay, thank you. Members of the council, there are no other items to come before us this evening, and a motion to adjourn is in order.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay, and a motion carries. Thank you for being with us. Good night, and have a good night.